Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting. Prior to the start this evening, we've got a special proclamation regarding Public Works. So, all of our representatives that are here from Public Works, we'd like to have you come up at this time. And so where's our Public Works folks? Come on up. Let's get, let's kind of get all evenly balanced out here, see?
Balance it out here.
All right, we have one of our special representatives here from Public Works, Pat Kozetsa. Pat, I'd like to have you say a few words about Public Works and what's going on. And this will be a very special event for you here this, this time. You've announced your retirement and we certainly are proud to have you here in all the years that you've worked with the city. But talk to us a minute about Public Works before I read our proclamation.
Happy to. Thank you. And thank you for being here. The celebration of National Public Works Week, it's usually the third week in May, is a time we take to recognize these employees that provide and maintain infrastructure and services that collectively we refer to as Public Works. Our theme this year is Public Works: Here to Serve You and Your Community. With that, I'd like to have these members introduce you, to you, and tell you what it is they do, so.
Thank you. Jerome Stewart, Operator Specialist at the Wastewater Reclamation Facility.
I'm Chuck Burrell, Sewer Cleaning Equipment Operator in the Sewer Division.
Maurice Nichols, I'm a Senior Refuge Collector in the Sanitation Department.
Charlene Ramirez, I'm a Laborer in Street Cleaning.
Tony Chido, Public Works Section Chief, Street Maintenance.
Chad Christensen, Engineer at the Stormwater Utility.
When you call Public Works 24-hour customer service number, you're going to be giving us an assignment that either they're going to handle or a member of their team's going to handle. We appreciate your support of Public Works and we thank you for the opportunity to serve you.
I also want you to know that when we have a flood or we have another interesting thing, whether it be snow or sleet or ice or a failure in the sewer system, these guys are the guys that are out and women that are there 24 hours a day to meet the needs of all of our citizens. And so this week, we are going to honor all these folks with National Public Works Week. So I'm going to read this quick proclamation. Public Works Services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and the support of an understanding and an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of Public Works Services and maintenance programs such as sanitation, sewers, streets, forestry, and wastewater reclamation. The protection and preservation of the area's natural resources for the benefit of future generations depends on the sustainability of these services and programs. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these functions, as well as their planning, design, and contribution, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of Public Works and engineering officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Department of Public Works and Engineering is materially influenced by the people's and their attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, the mayor, on behalf of our city council and all the citizens of Des Moines, hereby proclaim the week of 15th to the 21st of May 2011 as National Public Works Week in the City of Des Moines. And I call upon all of our citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our Public Works and to recognize the contributions of Public Works and engineering officials and that they make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Let's give them another great big hand.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Can we get in here for?
Yep, let's, let's get in tight. We're going to make a big picture. Before these guys all leave, and Pat, you might hang out just for a second, I just want to make one editorial comment here. There's going to be a bill that's taken up on the Hill tomorrow, we think, that has to do with property taxes. And while certainly we want to work closely with the legislature to see what we can do to hold property taxes down, an awful lot of the fees that we get through property taxes, whether they be residential or commercial, go to pay for the work that these folks do, plus police, plus fire, plus everything else that we do in the city. And some of the thoughts that had come out, I would hope that a lot of our elected officials up on the Hill would come down and spend time in the trucks with these guys when they're out doing their services, or in a police car, or in a rescue vehicle, to find out what they actually do and try to figure out whether or not those services are actually needed by the citizens of the City of Des Moines and not only there, but all across the other 947 cities and towns in this state. And so let's think about it. If you, we're going to give you a little bit of information on this a little later in the meeting, but we would like you all, as citizens of the City of Des Moines, to reach out to your elected officials and say, you know what? Our city was rated the number-one place to do business, the number-one place to raise a family, and the number-one place in the country to have a career, and I'm trying to figure out what are we going to try to fix with a bill like they're proposing that could have devastating effect on cities and towns across this country. So, not country, but this state. So let's reach out to them and thank you guys for everything that you do and all of our other city workers. So appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Joe Galloway, I think is somewhere in our audience. Joe, come on up. We've got another special presentation, and I think, Joe, I'm going to let you go ahead and take over the floor here, and then as soon as you're done, we're going to start a city council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Joe Galloway. I'm Chair of the Des Moines Park Recreation Board, and I've had the honor and privilege of knowing Don Tripp for approximately the last 15 years. And I was certainly thrilled to hear recently that he had been awarded the Iowa Park and Recreation Association's Top Honor, which is the Slateroy True Blood Award. Now, the criteria for this award are as follows. To, in order to receive this award, they look at the highest professional award in the IPRA program. The term "professional" encompasses many traits. To be considered for this award, the nominee should be a person who has given of themselves as they work with their clientele. Their everyday life should exemplify outstanding, dedicated, and unselfish service to the profession, community, and to this association. Now, the award is named after two giants in the park industry in the State of Iowa who are both deceased, and Don is very honored to be awarded a name with their names on it. Now, let me read from what City Manager Rick Clark wrote in his communication to the nominating committee, referring to Don. His diplomacy and ability to forge partnerships, build consensus, and deliver outstanding results have led to the completion of highly acclaimed public-private projects such as the renovation of Grayslake Park, the development of James W. County Soccer and Baseball Parks, and the opening of the John and Mary Papa John Sculpture Park. Amazingly, Don is able to balance his demanding career with a personal and family life that not only promotes an active, healthy lifestyle, but demonstrates it through his own participation as a coach, player, teammate, and spectator. Well, let me tell you something that you may not know about Don Tripp. We'll, we'll talk about Rick's last comment there. Don has been a volunteer youth coach for many, many years, and as a Pee-wee coach, guess what? He was Fred Hoiberg's first coach. He discovered Fred back in the third grade. I hope that's something you didn't know about, Don. Here are some things that you probably know a little bit about. Let's talk about the Principal River Walk. One day, Principal Financial came to Don and said, hey, we'd like to celebrate our 125th anniversary. We'd like to spend a lot of money to do that. Is there anything in Des Moines that we could do? Well, Don said, well, as a matter of fact, he reached over to his shelf and pulled off a master plan that had been already done. There had been no funds and there was no thought of principal being involved, but he said, well, here's something you might take a look at. So that is how the Principal River Walk got started. If Don didn't have that plan sitting on the shelf, we might not have a Principal River Walk. The money might have gone somewhere else. Let's talk about Grayslake a minute. I'm sure you all remember what a dump that was just a little over 10 years ago. There was an abandoned, derelict hotel there, and it was a haven for drug addicts and beer parties. Well, David Kreider came along and said, well, if you can do something about this, Don, and, and put a trail in within one year and get that place cleaned up, you can have enough funds to do that. So that was quite a challenge. But there was one problem to build this trail. And I walked around with Don around the lake, and there was a quarter-mile stretch where there was no land that the trail could be put on. There was railroad property in the way, and the railroad wasn't going to give up its, its tracks to put in a city trail, so we had to come up with a solution. Well, Don came up with a solution. He put in that wonderful river bridge that is now nationally famous. That was Don's idea, and he drove the team hard, and they completed the job within one year, and the rest is history. Let's talk about the John and Mary Papa John Sculpture Park. You all know that Don had a big role in that, and the plans kept constantly changing. It was a dynamic, fluid situation, and in one, one case, he was given 24 hours' notice that a major sculpture was going to arrive in Des Moines and to get ready for it. So Don kept the team humming, and all the pieces fell into place, and now we have a world-class sculpture park. And of course, it's not just the big projects that Don is meticulous on, it's the smaller projects. The first two lead, in other words, the award for green buildings in the, in the city, those were two park buildings, the Glendale Cemetery Municipal Maintenance Building and the Martin Luther King Park Shelter. Those were the two first lead buildings in our municipal inventory. Neighborhood parks, so Don has done a terrific job there. Look at Ashby Park, look at Cravero Park, look at Evelyn K. Davis Park. Those have really been great attractions. People not only come from all over the city to use those neighborhood parks, but they come from the suburbs. Now, of course, Don didn't do this all by himself. He has the support of a great team. Since he's been here 15 years, it's safe to say that he recruited everybody on his, on the team. He trained them, he mentored them, and he's given them room to spread their wings. So of course, sure, Don didn't do all this single-handedly, but I think he even deserves more credit because he has assembled this team, which has helped create these wonderful I'd like to close with a couple of comment, compliments. One compliment is really more priceless than any, anything that can be put into words. Don was originally given this award, award in Davenport, and Chris Coleman drove all the way to Davenport to be there for the ceremony. That speaks louder than words. And finally, I'd like to close with a quote from what Terry Rich communicated to the nominating committee regarding Don. This is Terry Rich speaking. Don's even-tempered, professional approach to projects made him one of the most successful and respected public leaders with which I've worked. Yet in his own way, he really never let the spotlight shine on his role. Instead, he gave credit to civic leaders and his staff. Don Tripp broke every stereotype of a public official I know. He was efficient, caring, a leader, and a genuinely nice person with which to deal. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, it's my high honor and privilege to present Don Tripp with his Slateroy True Blood Award.
Actually, all of your comments are good metaphors for what this is really about, because all of you in this room have had something to do. I look around this room and I see people that, all these projects you talked about, including all of you folks back behind me here and our city manager, have been critical to that. I'm not really crazy about this individual sort of recognition. Some of you know that. Some of you didn't listen. Nevertheless, for two reasons, it's something I'd like to take a minute to reflect on. Number one is that my career has been spanned here in Des Moines with tremendously supportive city council and mayor and city managers, especially the city manager today, Rick Clark, who's been my mentor here and a great supporter, and I thank Mr. Clark for that. In addition to that, two other groups. Our city staff is the best ever. You've got to be on your game here. As anybody who knows who's coming from the outside, work hard, work smart, be caring about what you're doing, or you just don't work out here, because this organization demands that of you. And finally, within the organization, our city staff today, Julie Hempel, stand up, folks, Julie Hempel, Rebecca Lindhart, Andrew Hennessy, Kevin Moran, Marlene Anderson, Ben Page, and Jen Wolf, a new employee, who's just on her first day of the job and thinks her boss is really smart, for at least a day. At least for one day, Jen. Am I missed anybody else here, Ben, that's here? Oh, and certainly one of my great friends and somebody who, whose name is imprinted on a lot of those things you said, Doug Romig. I'd like to thank those folks. But finally, and about the only reason that I agreed to let this happen is that this gave me a chance to reflect and to, and to show off my family. And I'd like them to come up here and be with me. Come on up. Three daughters here today, Emily, Ashley, Ellen, daughter-in-law Nicole. I have four sons who are not here today, Todd and Ben in Des Moines, and Derek and Brandon in Colorado. And they have another four of my grandchildren, three of them, I guess, that aren't here today. So the job's been great, Joe, and I appreciate everything you had to say, but this is what defines my life, to be real honest with you. Thank you.
Congratulations. It's well deserved.
Thank you. Can we get a picture?
All right. All right. See you, buddy. We're going to go ahead and get our council meeting going, but prior to our start, we have a invocation by our own council member, Brian Meyer. And if all those that would want to participate, we'd ask you to stand at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's please observe a moment of silence.
Ask the clerk pick role, please.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Grease.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Do we have motion?
I'll move, and Mayor, I'd like to move after item number one up to right after the consent item.
Okay. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. That's items three through 46. These are items that are routine and will be enacted as one vote unless somebody either from the audience or one of our council members pulls any of these items tonight. Item 4A, Councilmember Hensley wishes to speak. Item five, Councilmembers Moore and Mahaffey wish to speak. And item six, Councilmember Moore and I vote no. Are there any others? Any other items anyone would like to pull for further discussion this evening? Seeing none, can we have a motion? Item 4A, which is approving an alcoholic beverage license, application for the following for Americana, 1312 Locust Street. See, Hensley wishes to speak.
I'd like to talk about this. This is a new restaurant opening up, and it was originally going to be full. They did not have their certificate of occupancy. What I'd like to do is move approval of this pending that they get their certificate of occupancy, which we expect to be the end of this week, hopefully the end of this week and no longer, and that way...
Two days after getting, when they're going to...
So whenever they have their certificate of occupancy, they will be ready to go with their liquor license. And I would just ask, because we ran into this and actually had to call a special meeting for Dolls, this is the problem we have with Dolls, if maybe we could have a policy that we approve it so that it's available immediately upon either a temporary CO or a permanent CO, when we have similar situations. I'll move.
Just asking.
I would, I would like to, on this particular, I'd like to see what a policy looks like, because that sounds like a pretty open-ended deal, so...
Will we know from that? I'm happy to have it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, no, I meant yes. Sorry, Scott.
Seven yes.
Okay, item five is consideration of Class C liquor license renewal for the courtside entertainment, 1014 East 14th Street. Zoning Department recommends denial due to a failure to comply with Section 134-954, one half of the gross revenue from the sale of food and food-related services. Who would like to speak on this first? Mr. Moore, Mr. Mahaffey? Bob?
Yes, I'd like to speak on this. You may have read about this location. Over the weekend, they had a, a shooting outside in their lot. They, I want to give them credit, though, they had security enough to keep them out of the, out of the restaurant combination where they serve food and liquor. So thankfully, they had, had the security on staff to protect the people from within. And I have, I had a short talk with our police chief today, and their record is questionable, really. I mean, they've had a number of calls, and I don't know if, if our police chief's here, she may want to share some of their record with us.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council, Judy Bradshaw, Chief of Police. Over the last year, we've been called to this location 34 times. The breakdown of that, there's about 12 of those were fights and disputes. Two of those, and that's not to include the recent shooting over the weekend, were on shots fired. The rest were vandalism, a couple of narcotics complaints where there were arrests made by our officers. On October 12th of 2010, the watch commander observed what he thought was after-hours service at the bar. It was about 2:25 in the morning. He just so happened to be the former lieutenant of the vice unit, so when I promoted him to captain, who was working the midnight shift, and he recognizes vice violations when he sees them. It took him a while to answer the door. On that particular occasion, when he went in, he could not prove that they had been serving. He did observe what he believed was gambling inside of the establishment. Further investigation showed that they did at some point have a gambling permit, which evidently you can receive from the State of Iowa. However, it had expired, and, and they were made aware of that in a consequent follow-up by our officers. Just to sort of compare this establishment with others, 34 trips is high for a restaurant. If you look at Noah's Ark, over the last 12 months, they've had seven calls. The bulk of those have been for illegal parking. Latin King has had about 15 calls. The bulk of those have been for parking vandalism, and there was one rescue call to that restaurant. Christopher's, there's been two trips, no fights, no, you know, just illegal parkers up there at Christopher's. Even some of the, that wasn't, directed at you, Mr. Coleman. But these calls are high. You know, if it's walking and talking like a bar, it, it's acting like one, and I would caution the council on this. I understand that there's a proposal before you all tonight. I respect, you know, your right to, to allow them to go another 120 days. We'll continue to work with the business owners if that's what the council wishes to do, but there has to be a complete change in my mind in the way that that business operates and its business model.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, I, after talking with her, I had some real concerns, but I, I think there's a possibility that they could get their food sales up to the, the 7% that they need to, to qualify for food. But if, if we go forward with this, we're going to watch them very carefully. We've got to be protective of the, the, those who frequent the area and that, and that they do comply. And I know their attorney's here tonight, and I don't know whether he wanted to speak on this or not, but I, I would like to recommend that we allow them 120 days to address the, to be qualified for the renewal, and then we would want to watch them very carefully, Chief, and make sure that they are abiding by the rules and regulations, so...
I, I have a couple of questions for the chief as a follow-up, if I could, please. Number one, they've had the, I, I think I recall when we actually approved this license, there was some concern about this, and it came from the neighborhoods as well as who was actually going to operate the business. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So has it operated based upon the, the way we thought it would? I mean, the people that actually applied for the license are running the business, and they are there day-to-day during the hours? Is that our understanding?
I can't speak to the business practices of, of when the owners are there. It appears as though the...
That they are.
That that's running in the manner, in the spirit in which they applied. However, the practice here is that, again, high trip load, the nature of the calls are serious, and, and then the, the lack of the less than 50% alcohol sales that's not adhered to.
So what is their percentage of alcohol sales? That we're asking them to go 50/50?
7%.
I'm sorry, what?
It's 7%.
Yeah.
A 7%?
So, Chief, is it 57?
So is it 57%?
I'd suggest that Phil, Delphil, come up and answer that. They just performed an audit, and he could probably answer your question, Mrs. Hensley.
So my question is, then, what is a percentage that's actually alcoholic versus the food that we know they have to get back to 50% then?
Food is 43%. They need to be above 50% in order to qualify as a restaurant.
Okay, so why, as a restaurant owner, would they not know that? I mean, why is the, the individuals that hold the license not understand that they have to meet that threshold?
I think that's a question for their attorney. I think that it came up as an audit, is what I think it was. I think that it came up as an audit, is what I think it was.
How often do we audit them? And what's, what's been their performance previous months or quarters or years or whatever it's been?
Mr. Coleman, the question is, how often do we audit? It's based on a complaint basis, so when we suspect that they are not reaching the threshold level, we request the, the information. So this was the first time that we had requested it of this operation.
What's the period that you audit in?
Mayor, Council, Sue Donovan, zoning enforcement officer. We just asked for a year's audit. They actually didn't give us any audit information. The person who performed the audit came forward and said they're not going to meet it, they're going to be seven percent off.
So we haven't even done the audit ourselves? We're just taking their word for it?
Correct.
Probably even less. Okay.
Sue, can I ask one more question? And maybe somebody else has the answer, and, or maybe the attorney does. How long have they been in business there?
I believe two years.
Okay. Does anybody think they've ever been in compliance?
After their first year in business, the zoning enforcement inspector went out and did a walkthrough and looked at their business practice and seemed to think it was operating as a restaurant. We got a complaint actually from Vice that said that the operation had switched over and they were having more people at night, and it looked to be a bar. And so we initiated the audit based on a complaint from Vice.
Okay, thank you. Anybody to speak in the audience?
Alfredo Parrish, and I'll pass a copy this around for the council, representing Courtside Bar and Grill. I spoke to Mr. Mahaffey and, about this earlier and also with the zoning board. We prepared documents and we submitted that material to them about three weeks ago. The business recognizes there's a seven percent discrepancy. This is primarily due to a change they made in the business in August of two thousand and ten, which was establishing a disc jockey and the popularity of that, but they have immediately changed that once they found out they were seven percent out of sync. They understand the importance also of being a good community partner and demonstrate its commitment by existing numerous community programs. You'll see a list attached of the programs they have in fact assisted with. The business employs fifteen people in the community, including cooks, servers, and the like. Additionally, it's a safe and entertainment facility for numerous workers within the community and also their families, and they come from all walks of life to that establishment. Tremendous investment of resources and sweat labor went into the improvements of the building. By driving by the site and going inside the site, you can make those observations with your own eyes. It's a difference within the facet of that community. They keep it in excellent condition, and they keep the surrounding facility and grounds in excellent facility. It operates a top-notch security, not only to ensure the safety of its customers, but also to cooperate and will continue to cooperate with the Des Moines Police Department in maintaining the safety of the customers and also the safety of the neighborhood. Except for the incident this past Friday night, which happened at about ten o'clock and eleven o'clock, the police generally would be on duty at that time. Other than that, no other serious violation, and I understand what Chief Bradshaw said, has been brought to the attention of law enforcement in the area. I discussed that with the zoning board, and as a matter of fact, the consensus, including what I believe is an accurate report that is in the register, demonstrate that their security that was available on the Friday night made sure it was not a more serious incident in council. Mahaffey has addressed that issue. It's the fact that they had six security people there that brings it to the fact that they understand what they need and they are willing to provide the expense to make sure that's taken care of. Other than that, Courtside has absolutely, since their business has been established, no liquor license violation and reward their employees when, in fact, they've had a tester come out and they successfully passed the test. We have submitted to the zoning board and the staff a strong and viable business plan to reduce the seven percent discrepancy, which they discovered, and it was, can be tracked back to when they started having the disc jockey and the liquor sales got out of sync at that point. And generally, people were buying high-end liquor in the evenings as the bar got closer, but it's one of the few places where you can still get food that late at night. This strong business plan we submitted, the CPA who reviewed it indicated that in fact they can be in compliance within a hundred and twenty days. He has already submitted a preliminary opinion that supports that, and I believe we submitted that to the zoning board staff. Therefore, we're asking the council to approve a hundred-day extension. They understand they need to get in compliance. They understand the difficulty they've had, and they've addressed those issues. They have security on every night, two security on Thursday, six on Friday and Saturday, with addition of the police that they hire to come by about eleven o'clock on weekends. And the issue will be resolved with regard to the disc jockey and the larger crowd that does in fact come in. We're asking, requesting that you approve the renewal of the liquor license and allow Courtside a hundred and twenty days to be in compliance with the fifty-fifty provision. And the business plan that is already submitted, we believe that we can be in compliance at that point, and we can ask, answer any questions you might have at this point.
Anybody have any questions?
I...
Ms. Hensley?
Who's the CPA that prepared the audit?
I knew you would ask me that. I have to go to my file to get it, but I could get it. Brian, is his first name?
Is it a local firm or a...
Brian Lance prepared it. I worked with him and we submitted all the documents to him, Brian Lance, and yes, it's a local firm.
Okay. And so how long have they been working on this? It was when they had the disc jockey, but that was...
Well, it was when they received the letter, oh, when they received the letter from the zoning staff is when they started preparing the documents and found out they were seven percent out of sync. That's when we wrote the letter. I called a few people down here, and then that's when we started the letter to find out how we can get this thing worked out.
So has that been a couple months, three months, four months?
Actually, it's been about four, about four weeks.
About four weeks.
I can tell you the date, it's right, I have it in my file.
That's fine, if it's just...
Okay, sure.
Four weeks.
It's been the last four weeks or so. Correct.
Okay.
Phil, is there a correction to that? March ninth? Well, it's May.
May, okay. Time passes.
You're having fun, right?
Yeah. That's when the letter went out, oh, that's when the letter went out. I thought you meant how long we've been working on trying to get the material together, right? Okay.
So then we, as a city, will go back in and audit it, formally audit it within the hundred and twenty days? Is that the plan?
At the end of a hundred and twenty days.
At the end of the hundred and twenty days?
Yeah.
And we've submitted the business plan to the staff. We'll be working with them to make sure that within that period of time, they will have the fifty-fifty compliance.
Mayor, Council, we don't actually perform the audit. We ask that the restaurant provide us a statement from their CPA that indicates the results of their audit. That is financial statements deriving the revenues from the alcohol sales and the food sales.
Okay, thank you.
Skip?
Well, this is extremely serious, and I think everybody here needs to realize that this establishment is one block from a middle school one direction and one block from a high school another direction. It's acting as a bar, not as a restaurant by their own admittance. Now we've got gunplay outside, and even though it was outside, they're still responsible for what happens on their property. Two or three months ago, Bob and I started receiving complaints, and what the complaints were is that the bar was not working with the neighborhood association. But much to our surprise, when we attended the meeting, we heard just the opposite. We don't know who was complaining, but the neighborhood group did say that things were changing and the owner was working with the neighborhood. Sergeant Brent Harris was there. He was surprised we were there. He was working with the establishment. I'm going to be willing to support the hundred and twenty days for that reason, as long as the board councilman is the gentleman that moves, makes that motion.
Thank you, and I agree with you. They are addressing those issues and they are working with the neighborhood and understand their commitment to do that and will continue to do so. Thank you. Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say that even though that we have had a number of difficulties there, they have been supportive of the, the community. They've helped out in a number of cases with some of the schools and that, and dance, the dance teams and that. And so I'm willing to work with them, and I'm hoping the council will too, but Christine had comments before I make them.
I would just, no, I, I will support the hundred and twenty days, but I'd like to see us also have a recommendation that the report come back specifically to the council that's done from the auditor within thirty days after the hundred and twenty days, so that, you know, you're really giving them four months because they can't do the report until they finish the hundred and twenty days.
But you can't right away switch that over. You've got to have a little bit of time because to get that average up, you're going to have to have more than that over some part of the time, yeah. But if there's no other comments, I would...
Let me, let me make one other comment as we're getting ready to vote. Mr. Parrish, I hope that you emphasized to your client that some of the violations and the calls have been made. I mean, when we're talking about drugs, we're talking about fights, and we need to have six bouncers in there to, to keep this at a dull roar, and then we got gunplay outside as Councilmember Moore indicated. I'd like to throw one other piece onto it, that I don't want to see more violations like that coming back here, even if they're, they are in compliance. I mean, we, we see that, as was pointed out in so many other neighborhoods who have establishments that sell both food and liquor. I mean, this is, this is way out of whack with how most of them operate. So we'd like to see them get that, that kind of under control. I don't want to, three months from now, come back in here and, and hear that we had another fifteen, twenty violations.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor.
As a matter of fact, one more shooting and I don't want to even talk about it.
And I think they've begun to address it already, including understand what you said. Thank you.
Okay, you have a motion?
I would move to establish a hundred and twenty days, but at that point in time, come back to the council, not only with the audit report, but with the police report as to what, how many calls they've had in that period of time, and that hopefully they will be able to comply and continue to be supportive of the neighborhood operations.
Seven, yes.
All right. I think that completes the consent agenda. Mr. Manager or Council, should we take up that extra item right now before we start the hearings? And if everybody's okay with that? Ms. Hensley, it was your motion to move it up? Can we put it...
I'm going to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to look to the city manager to start out, and then I think there'll be other members from the council that have been involved up the hill that may want to make some statements also.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I think most of you are aware that this particular session of the legislature has seen a lot of discussion about property tax. The governor led with the initial proposal. There's been discussion in both the Senate and the House. We received word earlier today that there was going to be a debate in the House tomorrow on the floor to take up House File six-nine-one. House File six-nine-one. It is a bill that has rather significant impacts on property tax collections for cities in Iowa, including the city of Des Moines. And what we wanted to do today was just to acquaint the council with the impact that this legislation would have on us and hopefully to the community as well. I would say at the beginning that the motivations behind making these changes, I think, have been, have been appropriate. There's discussion about reducing the tax burden on commercial property. That's a good thing. There's discussions about providing more equity to, to property taxpayers. That's a good thing. There's discussion about making Iowa more competitive. Those are all worthy objectives. But as you can see, or as you will see in a moment, the impacts on the city of this particular proposal are, are, are quite drastic in, in context of what you've done recently. I put together a three-page outline. I think all of you should have a copy at your place, and Alan's going to help me with a little bit of an overhead here that will lay out the numbers as well. To begin with, what does House File six-nine-one do? It's a fairly complicated bill, but it can be boiled down to several key points. The first one is that reduces taxable commercial valuations from one hundred percent to sixty percent over a five-year period. Now, what does that mean? That means that estimated annual impact by year five for the city of Des Moines is about twenty-eight million dollars a year. Now, that's twenty-eight million dollars every year. It's not cumulative. It is twenty-eight million dollars from that year and then each year thereafter. A couple other provisions that are important to note. There is fifty percent potentially funded by the state. As I understand the way the state works, that would require annual appropriations. Unfortunately, our experience in dealing with such reimbursements has not been very good. It is conceivable, certainly, that the state would handle those appropriations and would do it each year forever, and that would be a source of some of the replacement revenue. That has not been our experience thus far. It is also argued that a portion of those revenues would be made up from future valuation growth. Just to put it in perspective, to account for that loss in commercial values and commercial taxes would take three billion dollars of new construction. Three billion dollars of new construction to replace these losses. It's not guaranteed, obviously. It's highly unlikely that would happen. To put it in perspective, three billion dollars of valuations would be about fifteen well-marked projects constructed all at one time. Fifteen, now that's probably a low number. It'd probably be more like twenty or twenty-five, but the fact is, if you do the simple math, it would take fifteen well-marked projects, and of course, well-marked's been one of our biggest commercial projects in our history.
And that would be with no abatements or no other programs?
Correct, with no abatements or incentives. The bill also has an impact on tax increment and economic development. It's a little bit hard to nail down exactly what that would be, but it would be significant. Some other provisions of the bill, it reduces maximum residential assessed valuation growth from four percent to two percent. That has an impact on us of about two million dollars a year. It would have full funding of the state, of the state school aid funding formula. That's in some sense a good thing, but it has an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar annual negative impact on our tax increment. Okay, so if we try to boil this all together, what does it mean to the city? If we turn the page, we'll see a few bullet points that deal with total impact of House File six-nine-one on the city of Des Moines, several points. First of all, if you aggregate those losses, it's about thirty million dollars in annual revenues. Keep in mind, our general fund is around a hundred and fifty million dollars, so to put it in some context for you, thirty million dollars is about twenty percent of our entire general fund. This would mean a reduction of, of essential services. As the mayor points out many, many times, if you look at our general fund, about sixty percent of our general fund is police and fire, so it's awfully hard to cut thirty million dollars out of annual expenses without touching those two services that we provide, which are highly regarded by our citizens. And frankly, this council has been loath to cut those in the past, but it would be hard to achieve those kind of cuts without impacting those services. There would be a shift of the tax burden from commercial to residential, hard to quantify it, but it would certainly happen. TIP capacity would be severely restricted, and I might say that TIP has been one of the things that this city council has used very effectively over years to see development occur in our community. Without it, the downtown wouldn't be what it is, and I would also say that you've begun to use it in many neighborhoods around the city to very positive effects. So TIP would really be, I can't say destroyed, but it would be severely restricted. And last but not least, one of the options the council would have would be to increase the tax rate. So ask yourself the question, what would happen if you tried to increase the tax rate to compensate for that loss? Just to do the simple math, would there be about a thirty-one percent increase in the tax rate? You'd end up with a tax rate of twenty-one point seven-five. That's just the city levy. Now, that's not the aggregated. You're now about sixteen fifty-eight, so you can see it's a rather dramatic increase in the tax rate, which, by the way, is one of the things that we've all said, let's not increase the tax rate because that's the optic that makes us seem less competitive to the rest of the world when we're trying to compete for business and residential. Now, the last thing I want to say is, there's some other things that have gone on here that impede us, impact the city on top of these cuts. I don't want you to forget these. The first one is, you might know, within a couple months, the city assessor has announced that we are going to experience a loss of two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars in commercial valuations. I'll repeat that again, two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars of lost commercial valuations, first time in my time with the city. First time in my time with the city that we've seen that kind of reduction in commercial values. If you do the simple math, that 225 million equates to about $3.7 dollars per year in lost tax revenues. Now, that's in addition to, that is going to happen regardless of what the legislature does, so that's a point of beginning for us.
So 3.7 million?
3.7 million. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I should have left out the word million. 3.7 million dollars per year, and that's an ongoing number. It's an annualized number.
On top of the 30 million that you identified earlier.
Yes, ma'am. And Mr. McKinley, as he always does, has corrected it already. Second point I want you to keep in mind is, by action of this council over the last four years, five years, you've cut 24 million dollars in annual expenses from your general fund budget. So those who think that we're fat and happy and can afford to make cuts easily, think again, you've cut 24 million dollars, and those have been difficult, difficult decisions. You've made them, you've done a great job, and you've not increased the tax rate over that period of time. The last thing to point out is that we are facing, as are all cities in Iowa, increases in cost centers beyond your control. The best example, and not to pick on pensions, but employee pensions are an example of cost centers that are increasing at an alarming rate. They are beyond your control. We simply pay what the formula calculates, and that adds to our burden. So all of these points under, don't forget, are things that are going to happen, are in place today, so you add to that the impacts of House File 691. Again, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is scheduled to be debated in the legislature tomorrow, and I want to repeat, I have no qualm with the objectives that legislative leaders and the governor put forth. They're trying to do the right thing. I'm confident of that, but there is devil in the details, and in our case, it's a very significant impact, and I would urge people to be very careful about the, hopefully, unintended consequences of this legislation. For those in the audience or listening or around the council table, we have a somewhat more detailed accounting of House File 691. If anybody wants a copy, I've got copies here for you. So I did want to say one last thing, and that is that Alan McKinley, who was up here at the podium a moment ago, and Scott Sanders, our finance director, are the ones that have generated all the fiscal impact analysis. They are very good at this business, so I have a good deal of confidence in the accuracies of these numbers. But let me say that a lot of people run different calculations and get different numbers, but you can see when you're talking at 30 million dollars a year impact of House File 691, somebody may say it's 35 million, somebody may say it's 25 million. I don't care what the number is. When you get to that magnitude, it's a very significant impact on the city. With that, Mr. Mayor and council, I'll turn it back to you.
Alan, anything? Skip?
I'd just like to add to what Rick said, is that if this is passed into law, Polk County will also have a resulting $26 million loss, and that will impact Des Moines. Not quite as much, but it will impact us, so it just exacerbates the situation.
Bob, any thoughts?
Well, I just hope that they would take this to heart and go out and contact their legislators and try to impress on them that how it's going to affect us as a city and also them as residents of our city. So hopefully, they'll be able to make some contacts.
Brian, probably you don't want to say much about this one. All right.
I'd just like to, I guess there are several comments. Number one, the timing of the bill. We know that there's been discussion about this throughout the campaigns and throughout the legislative session, but to have a bill of this magnitude coming in the final days of the legislative session, I think is really problematic. We need to have an opportunity to sit down and to really look at it, analyze it, because as the city manager indicated, there are lots of unintended consequences here, and it can be devastating to a city like Des Moines, and we've done a lot of the heavy lifting already. A couple of other things would be, we were specifically asked, and I'm sure many of you remember, at the beginning of this session, to talk about unfunded mandates. We were given direction to come back to the legislature with unfunded mandates that they could assist us with. There has been absolutely no discussion regarding unfunded mandates, and there are a list of unfunded mandates that we provided to them that would have a significant positive impact if they were dealt with at the legislature. So you can't possibly, in the final days of the session, be taking all of this into account and do it justice for everybody involved. I would hope that if they feel they need to pass something, that they would look at, maybe the Senate version, which obviously, we would rather not have that, but it's not as harmful to us, and that would give us the time to continue dialogue and working with the leaders. And I would ask that we tonight, Alan, if we could, Candy, get this document out to all of our Polk County delegation so that they can see it and let them know that we've had this discussion at the council table and that there is a council resolution that we could pass here tonight, sending all of this information up to them as they begin the debate tomorrow morning.
Sorry, I have a weak voice tonight. If this really was a billion-dollar tax decrease, and I thought my family would see it out in Beavardale, I'd tell you to all run to the Hill and go support it. The fact is, I don't believe it's going to be a tax decrease for a vast majority of people. You know, government takes a certain amount of money in order to fund and do what it wants to do, and I think the city and the school district and the county locally are doing a pretty good job of staying focused on the most important things. And if you want potholes filled, and you want police to show up when there's a crime, and you want firefighters to be there, and you want park and rec facilities to have their grass mowed, we need people and money to do that. So in essence, the commercial tax decrease that they're talking about is a way to fix what a lot of people think for 20 or 30 years has been too low of taxes on the residents. They've gotten, it's a confusing formula, but they've essentially gotten a tax credit, and corporate interests in the state have their fingers into a bill that is going to tip the balance. And when you tip the balance, those of us that own homes and pay taxes on the property we own, our taxes are gonna go up. I do believe the governor, and I think he's exactly accurate, the corporate tax in this bill will go down. But the fact is, citizens then have to decide, we want fewer teachers, fewer people in the courts, fewer people in our jails, fewer times the grass is mowed and police to call. We either have to decide we want a lot fewer of all that stuff, or our taxes are going to skyrocket on our homes. There's a better plan. Christine mentioned Senator Gronstall and the plan that's been developed in the Senate. I am for that. I think it's good. I think we do pay too much in property taxes, but this bill is a disaster for people that care about a strong, safe community.
The only thing that I would add to what has been said, I said most of it before we started this hearing, is we're talking about consequences here, and people choose to live in a place because of quality of life, and quality of life is impacted by safety, whether it's police or it's fire. It's about parks. It's about the way we maintain those parks. It's about the way we maintain our streets. It's about the way these guys shovel the streets out and plow them out during a snowstorm. I've got to tell you, we get pretty high marks from our citizenry and from those who visit Des Moines, Iowa, especially over the last eight, eight years, 10 years, for the quality that we and focus that we have had on cultural, quality of life issues and public safety issues, and whether it's national media or whether it's just visitors and businesses looking at Des Moines, they're absolutely amazed at Iowa, and I've had lots of people call us, as we receive many accolades for getting the honors that we have gotten over the past 18 months, that I think numbers about, what was that thing we have, about 16 of them, 18 of them? 18? It's unbelievable, the recognition that Iowa's getting, and nobody, as you look at the big bucket of taxes, some are too high, some are too low, but in the meantime, Iowa is right in the 15 to 20 from the low, not at the high. At 50 is the highest burden of taxes on their citizens. But part of what we do is dedicate those dollars to fulfill the expectations of our residents and our businesses and provide them with a safety and the quality of life that they've grown to expect in Iowa. So I would suggest that all of us here that are listening and in the chambers tonight, call your legislators and let them know that this stuff does matter, quality of life does matter, quality of public safety matters, and that the kind of draconian cuts that they're suggesting are going to have huge impacts on our ability to deliver those services. And while we talk about raising those taxes, as much as was estimated we'd have to, to fill that gap, I'm not sure that legally we even have the ability to do that without emergency levies and all kinds of other things. So we're left sort of in the lurch and unable to respond, and we have not been able to have reasonable discussions, in my opinion, with all the legislators to discuss the consequences of these kinds of cuts. So I think that we've got a motion by somebody.
I'll move that we receive and file the comments, and that we also send the copy of the presentation that the city manager went through to the Polk County delegation yet tonight, so they'll have it tomorrow before the debate begins.
And we might even send it out to every legislator in the state of Iowa, and not just limit it to ours, because I think that every city, don't you, in the state, is going to be affected by it more or less, depending on what their commercial property taxes look like.
As well as leadership.
Right.
I'm gonna abstain from the vote because I work there.
But I might impress one more time what Rick said. The commercial property valuations is being reduced by 28%, so already, the businesses are getting a reduction when this comes into, the tax year comes into effect. So that is a big, big reduction for them.
Mr. Coleman?
Six yes, one abstain.
All right. With that, we're gonna move right straight to hearings, and that'll be Item 50, show that we're starting hearings at 5:30. I appreciate everybody's patience. We did think that it was important to move this House File 691 up and have this discussion so that we can get the letters out with approval of the council, so thank you all for your patience with us. Item 50 is a hearing item on the vacation as parkland and right-of-way and long-term lease operation management and maintenance agreement of the Des Moines Botanical Center and adjacent grounds to the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above the waiver as requested by the Des Moines Botanical Garden requires six votes. And C is approving the Urban Renewal Development Agreement, Council Communication Number 11-266. Is there anyone to speak on this proposal? We ask that anyone that wants to speak, calling our singular person that has stepped up, that if you could get on this side so we have an idea how many folks want to speak to. Give us your name and your address.
I'm Fred White. Live in Brownswood Drive, West Des Moines, and I'm representing a number of people here. My colleagues in crime, Tom Urban, Buzz Brennan, Doug Guing, Carl Varley, Alvin McDonald, and there are others. And I don't, I haven't come prepared with a pitch for this, but I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Great project.
You have a question? We heard from somebody, or I did, I assume other people did, about a couple aspects of the agreement, and I'm just wondering if, because this was once a city facility, if there's any plans to have an annual day for citizens to go? The person that wrote us presented a couple of examples where botanical gardens around the country were open to citizens one or two days a year for free.
Yeah, and that came up, I think it was planning zoning, when we appeared there. You know, we are going to immediately start a search for an executive director, assuming this passes tonight. And I kind of hate to make a policy in advance of having the person on board that's going to put those policies into effect, but I think all of us that have been involved in this enterprise think that having a free day, we've heard, once a month, maybe on Sundays or that sort of thing, makes a lot of sense. I'd also let you know that the contract includes a paragraph that requires us to provide, I guess, free admission and/or participation in the educational program for people who are, I don't have the document in front of me, but who are in need, who can't afford to do that themselves. That's the essence of it. So we have some obligations already to provide services of that sort.
Good. Any other questions?
Yeah, I think this is a very good project. However, I've still got some unresolved issues with the alley being closed to emergency vehicles, and I can't, I can't look the other way on safety. I'm gonna have to vote no on it unless that gets changed.
I think that I've made it, that I've advised the council of our communications with the fire department and our agreement with them that if we sprinkled the building, all of the building except for the dome itself, and installed stand pipes on the backside of the building so that firemen could get into the building with their hoses attached to a stand pipe, and an additional fire hydrant, that they felt that that would provide adequate fire protection. Now, that, of course, doesn't take care of other types of emergency vehicles, but that is something that we intend to do, and have provided money in our budget for those things. So.
Well, I think it's a great project, and I think that with all the other botanical gardens around it, it could give us a real quality garden that could compete with some of the others that are in different states and that. And if there are no other questions or no other discussion on this, I'd certainly move the project to go forward.
Six yes, one no.
Yes, sir.
Just to thank you, you know, this has been three and a half years of auditing.
Could you step up so we can get on the record? We like thanks on the record.
I'm Buzz Brennan.
We don't get a lot of them.
I am on the board of this new organization. I know most of you, I've met with most of you many times. I want to thank you, Mayor, the council, the city manager, who I've come to enjoy working with a lot. Of course, on our side, Fred White, you see who he is. Tom Urban is taking over the chair of our group. This is, this is a very fine beginning we have, but there is risk. You know, we have to provide a botanical garden with superior gardens that draw people, or we have failed, and that will take quite some doing. But thank you for this opportunity. I'm not a gardener, but oh, thank you for the opportunity of working for this marvelous city we live in. It's a great start. Thank you.
Thank you, Buzz. All right. With that being said, let's move on to Item 51, on the request from Paul Kester to rezone 1704 High Street from C2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial to NPC neighborhood pedestrian commercial to develop 21-unit apartment building. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Is there anybody in the audience to speak either for or against this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am Doug Saltskaver, Engineering Resource Group, 2413 Grand Avenue, Des Moines. Also here is the developer, Paul Kester. We were successful through P&amp;Z. We had a neighborhood meeting. We had a neighborhood meeting, had a couple concerns by some neighbors. We've met with them after that meeting, and believe worked out their concerns. I guess with that, I will answer any que, I might also mention that they have been to the Sherman Hill Association meeting, and a letter of support has been provided. I believe you have a copy of that?
We do.
All right, any questions, anybody?
I'll go ahead and move item 51, but I just ask that we still have the open question about the traffic at 17th and High, that stop sign, and that, I did not see that addressed anyplace, so just ask Gary if he could make sure that that's addressed as well as this moves forward.
Thank you, Doug. Item 52, on the conveyance of a license agreement at 1012 Oak Park Avenue, McHenry Park, to Quest Corporation for $200 and to continue to May 23, 2011, at 5:00 PM. So, I guess it's a, on a conveyance, but it's a request to continue this item to the 21st. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? If someone can...
Seeing none, I'd move item 52.
Right.
Seven yes.
Item 53, on the conveyance of permanent water main easement across 4315 Southeast 14th Street to the Des Moines Water Works for $1. Anybody here to speak on that item?
I'll move, I'll move 53.
Item 54, on the vacation conveyance of an irregular-shaped segment of Grand Avenue right-of-way at the intersection with Flewer Drive, adjoining 1800 Grand Avenue to the Des Moines Independent Community School District for $1. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item, of a conveyance for the Independent Community School District?
I'll move 54, A and B.
Seven yes.
Item 55, on a request from Wesley Retirement Services, Inc., for an amendment to the Wesley Acres PUD conceptual plan at 3520 Grand Avenue to add 66 additional parking spaces on campus and to construct a 4,650 square foot addition on the north side of the John Stoddard Health Center and subject to administrative review of final PUD conceptual plan. Anyone here to speak on item 55?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Will Worthington. I'm with Wells and Associates, here to answer any questions regarding this proposal. We have met with the neighborhood, and we have addressed the items that were brought to question, and we have a plan in place that we've been supported by the Planning and Zoning Board, and we feel good about the direction this project's headed.
I'll go ahead and move item 55, and I appreciate the meetings with the neighborhood, and I know there was some concern, and you've addressed them, so thank you.
Did you need certificate of need for the beds for the medical center?
Pardon me?
Did you need state certificate of need pass for the beds for the healthcare?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
There are no beds, it's all daycare program.
Okay, we need to have you, since you're speaking, we need to get you on record.
Thank you.
I'm Craig Johnson, Executive Director of Wesley Acres. The proposed addition to the building is for an adult day program. There are no licensed beds required, so no certificate of need.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion.
Seven yes.
Item 56, on application from City Cab LLC for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a tax cab service. This item was continued from April 11. Council Communication Number 11-267, and there's a letter of support for City's cab that I think we all have seen. Anyone that, who wants to speak on this item, we're gonna ask you to speak one at a time. In particular, I want to specifically say that I don't wanna listen, because this is a continuation of a hearing. We don't wanna have a bunch of information that we already have had. We're just interested in, in new information, and I think in regard to the information that was forwarded to the manager and legal, I would like to have the police department and whoever, Mr. Manager, you would like to have speak to, your analysis has taken place since that last hearing, to address those items of concern.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council, Captain Dana Winger with the Des Moines Police Department Detective Bureau. I'm here to speak tonight specifically to the information contained in the letter that was presented during the original council meeting. I was asked by the Chief of Police, at your request, to look into the allegations contained in that letter, along with interviewing all the individuals named in the letter who signed the letter, and the individual who the allegations were against. To make a long story short, a summary of that investigation, I believe, was forwarded over here to City Hall, but there was nothing to substantiate any criminal activity or implications as cited in that letter. Detective Chad McFarlane, from our fraud and financial crimes unit, investigated this matter. He used certified interpreters to ensure that all the information was accurate and there were no misunderstandings. He also utilized the resources of the Central Iowa Fraud Group, which includes state, federal, and local officials from out, throughout the metro area. There were no issues of stolen credit cards, no victims identified, and nothing to substantiate any criminal activity as cited in that original letter. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
My one question would be, so, everybody, you listened to the hearing itself that we had, so, any additional things that were alligated by individuals were also checked into?
I was tasked with specifically the letter itself, and the allegations contained in that.
Okay.
Or, if you're talking about the comments from the floor, from the, from the last meeting, no.
Okay. Any, any other questions of Captain Winger? You may want to remain available in case we need to have clarification. I guess I would ask the attorney for the applicant, if you'd like to make any statement at this point?
I'd like to reserve statement for after everyone else has spoken.
Muhammad Ahmed, thank you, Mayor and council, that coming here, please give the license. If you have any question, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Then we'll ask everybody after they've spoken to sit down if they would, please.
Hi, my name is Shani Amin, 100 East Euclid Avenue, Suite E, Des Moines, Iowa. I'm the president and the owner of the City Cab LLC. I just wanna, Mayor and city council members, I just wanna say sorry for everything that happened for the last hearing, I wasn't here. I just wanna apologize, and that's all, for the accusation that they made about us and the cab company.
Okay, thank you.
Ben Brackett, resident of Des Moines. I've sort of been brought into this, I'm, my original, my first client here is Muhammad. He's also a colleague and a good friend of Muhammad Ahmed. I was, sorry, this, I was not exactly prepared, but basically was just able to, I just wanted to show support for Muhammad. I've used his cab service. I've also, I've actually represented the other Muhammad in a commercial real estate transaction, so I know him as a businessperson, just was here to lend some support.
Are you an attorney?
I am not.
And what you're addressing?
Real estate agent?
Yes.
That's how he was your client?
Yes, correct. 230 Park Place, Des Moines, Iowa, 50312.
All right, thank you very much.
Oh, yes, I would like to submit this letter, I didn't know that was something I needed to do.
I'll move to receive and file. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Received, thank you.
Thank you, man, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Muhammad Amin, resident of Des Moines, 2744 Floor Drive, Des Moines, Iowa 50321. I have a business in grocery store 2302 University, Plaza Food Market, and I'm, I'm here, I'm, I'm coming here to be support Muhammad, uh, City Cab.
Thank you, appreciate it.
My name is Alawash Ahmed. I come from Somali community. I come here to support City Cab. I wish my community improve their, the way they life, and I would come here to support, support them.
Thank you very much.
My name is Abdullah Here, I live in Des Moines, 926 Euclid Drive, Building A10, Apartment 24, 21. I'm here to support Muhammad Ahmed on the City Cab.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, William Lillis, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300. I'm appearing on behalf of Trans Iowa Yellow Cab at Capital Cab. Since this matter is a continued public hearings, my understanding, I think the council has heard our concerns. We would renew those and make those part of this record prior to consideration of this application. I noticed in the resolution that's before the council, either to approve or deny, the application is for six new cabs, and with City Cab being the applicant, the resolution, I think, at least the one that's prepared, that we've seen deals with five. We renew our urge to the council because of the longstanding question as to the numbers of cabs, and the reports that have been before the council before. We had talked with Mr. Kramer before, not knowing that this item was coming back to the council this evening. We knew it was continued, but we wanna be sure that the council at least knows our thoughts on the numbers of total cabs. We've gone back and forth on that particular item. We're surprised, I guess, to see that there's no mention in the resolution if the council chooses to approve the five in number, that there's not a recitation of the total numbers of cabs based upon many, many months of discussions and also other items. So, I guess that our caution, our question is, we wanna be certain that at least there's some finding prior to the adoption of five new applications, or five new licenses, that the total number of 118 certainly, and that takes out Alpha, because they're not subject to a lot of discussion. I would note for the council that since the last time we were here, the ordinance has been adopted, and it has been implemented as far as the repayment of the various cab companies at the airport, and also just recently at Court Avenue. But that's just implemented, and the $2 charge seems to be working, but honestly, I think it just has been put into play last week for finality. So, that part, although that's not part of the discussion this evening, that is something that we should report back to the council. So, we'd welcome questions that you might have. Mr. Christiansen's here this evening, Mr. Sackett could not be, but we certainly have questions or concerns regarding the total number of cabs.
Could I ask you quickly about the $2?
Sure.
I think, at least my, my understanding was that, that anybody that used that cab stand either downtown on Court Avenue or out there, so, I'm a customer, I'm gonna pay $2 bucks, is that correct?
That's correct.
It doesn't matter whether I use a Capital Cab, or a City Cab, or a X Y Z Cab.
That's right.
I'm gonna pay that $2 bucks.
That, for the use of the, frankly, to defray the costs of the steward, because that's been the obligation of Trans Iowa.
Well, I understand, but is Trans Iowa customers, are they paying that $2 bucks?
Yes, absolutely. Everybody's paying the $2. So, if you use that service at the airport, or use it at Court Avenue, a little bit more difficult to implement at Court Avenue, I'm being told, because they have the card that swipes, but that, at the airport in particular, it's been working very well.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Any questions that the council might have?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
My name's Margaret Felk, I live at 400 Second Avenue. I like the Capital Cabs and Yellow Cabs, they've been great with me going to work and shopping and getting me to places I need to go, and I don't see why we need more cab service when we've got the Yellow Cab and we've got Capital Cab. I don't think we need more cabs. That's my opinion.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
My name is Ahmed Ibrahim, I live at 1321 24th Street. I have a grocery store at 2424 Martin Luther King Parkway. I think we are very happy to have City Cab in Des Moines area, because all our communities, most of them, they don't speak English, and they are, we have a lot of communities here, some of them, they speaks Arabic, English, and more, more other languages, and that helps to reach them wherever we need, they need. So, City Cab is very happy to join in Des Moines area. So, that's what we request, if you are the community of in Des Moines. Thank you.
So, you're supportive, is that correct?
I support it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Representative?
After listening to House 561, no saying, didn't say that too loud. But anyway, K O Abdul Somad, I'm here as CEO of Creative Visions. And I, I came here when we first were here, I'm still in support, you know, of the City Cab company. I also work with the Somali and Sudanese community. They, they have an office in Creative Visions, and I talk to them about their growing needs. You know, I talk about the language barrier, and, you know, this cab company would be a boost for them. You know, I was driving around, in fact, I took one of my colleagues, the House Rick Olson, around the other day, and we were just pointing out the growth, you know, and the diversity in the community, especially going down Martin Luther King, to where you have, you know, the, the cab company and the Sudanese community, Somali community growing, and then crossing over Euclid, where you have the Saigon Food Market now, and then the Thai Village, and coming back up, you know, especially going then on the university, going up through with the Asian community and the growing there, and then going over on East, 18th, East 15th University, then you're looking at the, you know, Hispanic community. We are a growing community, you know, without a doubt. And, and to be very honest, you know, I'm hoping also, with all the growing businesses and diversity, it also inspires the African-American community to get into, you know, economic development, you know, and start doing some things, so we can also learn to, to get some things done and add it to the community itself. But I think it'll be a great vote, you know, for this cab company, you know, and, you know, and I agree, I have nothing wrong. I think Yellow Cab and Capital Cab, you know, I mean, you can complain, you know, about it, I think it's, I don't wanna be negative about any of the cab companies, but that's why I wouldn't be negative about City Cab. I, I think, in addition, because of our growing diversity, they would be an asset, you know, again, there's this community, and I think, again, it supports the diversity and gives them ownership, you know, into a community, you know, and especially in Des Moines, and when we talk about a tax base and some other issues, I think that's great. And that's what I want to say, and I don't know if I can sneak in, because I gotta leave here in a few minutes, if I get a copy of what you were talking about earlier.
I'll give you this one right here, sir.
Can somebody give me a copy?
And so, as we're trying to continue to provide good services to all the people of Des Moines, Iowa, and all the cities across the state, remind our legislators that our ability to do so is impacted by House File 691.
Okay, and, and I do, 'cause I, I...
Oh, shh.
Okay.
What did you say?
I don't need my copy, I live it with you, K O.
I appreciate it, but I wanna thank you, and, and I agree with that, and I think one of the things... But I want to thank you, and, and I agree with that, and I think one of the things that voting yes for this cab company helps us do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Sam Creamer. My address for the purposes of tonight's meeting is 6600 West Town Parkway, Suite 190 in West Des Moines. I am a Des Moines native. I was born on Sixth Avenue, and in July, I will have been a full-time resident of this community for 55 years. This is a wonderful community. This is, in fact, a world-class community. This is a community of individuals now throughout the world, including individuals from Africa. Ladies and gentlemen, you've been very patient with City Cab, and I want to express my appreciation for that patience. This has been a very difficult process. There are true and genuine cultural differences that we're trying very hard to overcome. I truly believe that City Cab will be a wonderful addition to the city of Des Moines. I believe that it will be a great service to the residents of the city of Des Moines, and I want to thank you in advance for your support of City Cab through this long and sometimes difficult process. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sam, I have a question.
And I've got one, too. Go ahead.
Okay, Brian had, has been waiting, so I want him to go first.
I thought, and I wasn't here the last time, but I thought we had a deal where it was the cap on the numbers and five. We would give five new licenses to City Cab. I'm very supportive of that. I can do, I can do five with the cap. Is that, I mean, is, is that okay, or you can't do that?
Let me explain to you, Mr. Meyer, my understanding of an agreement which was actually reached with Mr. Ellis and was presented to the city. It was my understanding that there was to be an overall recognition that there are currently 118 licenses, inclusive of the five for City Cab, the Freedom Cab, and the yellow and Capital Cab. Is that correct, Mr. Ellis?
Yes. All of our discussions with Sam's client, assuming there would be five that would be granted by the council or City Cab, that there would be a total of 118, notwithstanding Alpha, which is not in the count.
Now, if I may continue to.
If that's the question.
If I may continue to answer the question. This 118 is the current, would be the current number that's available. If Trans Iowa, if Freedom, if City Cab wanted more cabs, any of us would have to come back and go through this rather arduous process once again. We are in agreement with 118, we are in agreement with the five, we are in agreement with the idea that if anybody wants more cabs, including Trans Iowa, that they would have to come back to the council to get more cabs.
Yeah, I can support that. I can support five and a cap and people coming back.
We, we have, we have agreed to that with Trans Iowa, and we agreed to that on the record tonight.
All right, let's see if we can get some more questions. Christine?
Two questions. I received information today regarding West Glen, and I believe this was asked earlier. Can you give me some update on what the status is of West Glen?
Ms. Hensley, I have received no information regarding West Glen, and I was terrified that I would come to tonight's meeting. Here's some more news. I'm sorry, what information have you received?
I was informed this morning that the cab company has been told that they are not able to come back and pick up or drop off customers at West Glen, and that there was an incident that was shooting out of a window last week or within the last 10 days.
Maybe, maybe somebody else.
Shawnee, this is Shawnee, and he'll speak to that.
Regarding West Glen, we don't have any issue about West Glen. We pick up and drop off people, and we got some customers call us from there, pick them up, take them back home, or get them from home from point A to point B.
Was there a problem with a window being blown out, or?
Window, no. Not us. I don't know about the other cab company.
Okay. And then my last question for Mr. Kramer.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hensley, I'm David Mohammed. He wants to speak to that issue alone. Is that acceptable?
That's fine.
My name is David Mohammed. I live 926 Oak Ridge Drive. We don't have any problem for West Glen. We are working some, all the time, Blue Moon and Tonic, and one of us, they call every day.
So you're going out there every day and?
Yeah. I'm going to show you my phone if you want it. I talked to the guy for that. Right now, he called me, and he was need something for somebody to pick up over there.
Okay.
And we was over here, and I say we are busy right now.
David, in specific, do you know anything about a window being shut out?
No.
Or broken, shattered?
No, no. We don't.
So there's, there's, there's nobody associated with City Cab that's aware that there's any police report or a problem?
At West Glen?
I'm not alleging it was you guys, but I heard the same thing.
At least, they, they are saying they don't know of any, and we don't know.
Then my last question, Mr. Creamer, is, are the individuals that were at the council meeting two weeks ago that made the accusations that were employees of City Cab, are they still employees of City Cab?
No, they are not. They're not working with them. They're working for Freedom Cab Company. The same day they made the accusation, next day they.
They started. My understanding is they started working over there in part because Freedom would not agree to the $2 fee, is that right? That they believed that they would save money by, I don't know.
It's, it's a very complicated answer, but let me give it to you as I have it as of 605. And that is, these two individuals came and sought to extort a ownership in City Cab. When that transaction was not going to be completed, they decided that they were going to try to, in effect, torpedo the application of City Cab. It is my understanding that part of the reason they wanted to do that is somehow they believed that they would have to pay the $2 charge out of their pocket rather than have customers from the cabs pay that $2 charge. It is my understanding that as a result of making false and wrongful accusations against their employer, they are no longer working with City Cab, and that this may have had some kind of pre-arranged agreement that they were going to move over to Freedom Cab without our knowledge in order to torpedo the application.
Okay, so then who were the, who would be the individuals driving the cabs? Do they currently, do we have, do they have enough for the five cabs?
Yes.
And they all have appropriate licenses and documents?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Anybody? LA Skip?
Again, thank you very much for this opportunity.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to confirm that the, the agreement that they came to, I think there may end up being a glut of, of cab licenses in the city. I think we're very close to that, if we haven't already reached it. But I am willing to give five licenses to City Cab. However, we have the cap at, I think, 118? That would be my motion.
Briefly, counsel, just so everyone understands, the agreement is not between the city, doesn't really affect the city, it's between the, the cab companies. You already have in your ordinance a functional cap. Just want to make sure everybody's clear on that, and putting in a, a specific number won't do anything to enhance that cap because any future request for additional cab licenses will have to come back, and they'll have to demonstrate public convenience and necessity. So whether you have a numerical cap that you put in this particular resolution or not will really have no impact under the ordinance, and will also have no impact on future council providing additional licenses. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
I, I, let me try and put it this way. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty clear that that's the, the working view of the ordinance, and I think yours and our previous city attorney's position. But for me as a person, as one councilperson, and I guess what I would like going forward is, and what I'll insist on as a person, is that this is not just a floating cap, but that a significant statement of necessity would have to be addressed for the council to consider any more than 118. And in my view, none of the recent applicants have made that kind of persuasive argument that those are needed. You know, the, the ordinance uses the word necessity. I feel like we're, we're doing this not because of, of any necessity that we need five more cabs. I'm doing it because I believe the city will lose the cabs under which Alpha is operating in the city, and when they, when that court case ends, we will have significant enforcement obligations, I think, to them, and I'm comfortable with 118. So the semantics of it and how the ordinance is currently written, I understand and trust and accept your judgment. But I'll say for the record, I'm not satisfied that we've required the kind of documentation that would cause us to think differently than the 118. And, and I'm going to be really strong on that because I think that's one reason why we've perpetuated an 18-month fight, consuming more time of the council and important city leaders than probably any other issue. And I don't think but 2% of our population would say this was the most important issue in the city the last 18 months. You know, I, I just don't want to go through this until somebody's presented clear evidence, and I think that the city staff have an obligation to believe and review that evidence before bringing anything forward to, to raise it more than 118. I just don't think we've done that this time.
And that's what I was trying to get at with the glut, and the glut, and the 118 goes to the necessity. You know, we had a couple of cab companies that applied at approximately the same time, I think, out of fairness, but if somebody else comes forward with wanting more licenses, I'm, I just can't see the need for it. I do not see a need for any more licenses.
Brian, does your motion include 56A, the letter of support?
Yes. Move 56, 56A.
Six yes, one no.
All right, thank you very much.
Again, thank you very much to the council.
All right. Let's move forward. Item 57. We'd ask everybody to clear the council chambers, please, that are headed out, so we can keep moving here. All right, item 57 is on the demolition at 717 Grand Avenue, resolution proving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and to receive and file the bids. Council Communication Number 11-269A is accepting and completing construction approval of final payment for asbestos removal at 717 Grand Avenue, formerly the YWCA R E W Services Corporation. Mr. Manager, I'm going to have you quickly touch on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. The item on the agenda tonight is not proposing that you award this contract. As you all have noticed, I think the bid price is about 550,000 hours over our estimate. You'll recall that the demolition of this building was a major discussion point when you acquired the property. We did acquire the property at a substantially reduced price, courtesy of some help from our friends, but nonetheless, the bid amount here of about 2.2 million hours is well over what we had estimated. So before you actually take action to consider award of this contract, I would suggest three steps. One, revise the specs to see if there's any way we can reduce the cost and discuss that with potential bidders. And I think some of you received an email today from an individual who proposed to have some thoughts on that subject, so it would give us a chance to follow up with that individual. Two, I think we ought to try to contact some area property owners to see if they can help with this extraordinary cost if we can't whittle it down any other way. And three, you all bought this property because you wanted to have redevelopment there, and our hope is that a redeveloper will come forward if that should happen. It's probably not likely it would happen in the immediate future, but if it would happen, and there are opportunities like that, we think that perhaps the whole demolition could be handled by a private developer as part of a larger development project. So those are three avenues. I think we ought to pursue all of those before you then take up the matter of award of the contract. As you can imagine, there is some time constraint there. We don't have forever to do that, so we're going to have to move on, on this rapidly, which we intend to do. So, Mayor and council, I suggest that you, you're not being asked to approve the contract. My intention would be to pursue those avenues. If you have other thoughts or directions for me, let me know.
Well, what are we going for, for a motion then?
So I think we're moving that we continue the hearing and allow the city manager to explore those options and have it come back. I think I saw in the blue someplace, the 23rd of May, is that appropriate? Can we hold, can we continue the hearing that long with those contracts, I guess?
I don't know that we have to continue the hearing, Mr. Lester, or?
Well, I think there's a rejection of the bid, and what we're hoping to do is to.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not suggesting you reject the bid. I'm suggesting you, you're not being asked to approve it, and just before you, you award contract, you're making a decision on that.
Well, it's 25% over your estimate, right?
Depending on what outcome, yeah. It's not likely that we're going to be able to recommend a bid that's 25% over estimate unless some of those other mitigating factors come into play that I talked about.
Would we be able, I think that many of us at the council table did receive an email from an, an individual that does, I want to call it value engineering, I don't know how you value engineer a demolition, but he does work specifically on larger projects. I mean, would it be worthwhile to have a conversation with them to look at options?
I, I mentioned those three options, and one of them was to do that, was to look at the specs and to talk to other folks and see if we can figure out a way to whittle the cost down. I, I'm simply asking for the time to do that, and.
So you want to, to continue and refer to you to?
Yes.
Look at the options and then report back to the council in how long?
The 23rd?
Well, we can try to report back in the 23rd and do our best to get something back to you at that time. Yep.
Okay.
So that's my motion.
Anybody to speak on this, and the audience? Seeing none, we have motion.
Mayor, how would this affect the completed construction and final payment for asbestos removal? Is that a separate?
That's a separate contract that has been, or will be completed, has been completed, so that's all taken care of, and that was below estimate, so we get a good price on that.
But do we need to pass that tonight?
No. Oh, or, I'm sorry, I guess the answer is yes.
57A, we ought to pass.
Yes, thank you.
But let's, let's.
So I'll move 57 to continue it, refer it to the city manager to look at the three options that he outlined, and then move approval of 57A.
Thank you, yes, that's correct.
Seven, yes.
All right, that completes our council agenda at 617.
That was the hearing agenda.
Yep. So the hearings are completed at 617. That takes us back to item 47. Item 47 is an ordinance, first consideration amending Chapter 10 of the municipal code regarding Class E liquor licenses. Amendment required due to a recent state code change. Any substantive discussion we need to have? Mr. Attorney on this issue?
Substantively, not much of a specific question.
How will we monitor this? That's my question. I mean, we had the issue tonight with the restaurant not being in compliance. I can see we're allowing it to be done on, for them to report it on their own. We're not going to have staff go in and do surprise audits. I, I would like to know, because this will have a huge impact in the community. I, I mean, we've dealt with some situations, universities, some other places, and I'd just like us to have some idea from a city staff perspective as to how we're going to address this.
Well, not only that, but I think it becomes, every convenience store is going to become a 24-hour liquor store.
Absolutely. And so then the question would be, can we limit so that they're not able to sell the little bottles, which are the problems in a lot of these facilities? little bottles, which are the problems in a lot of these facilities?
The legislation removed the restriction on the stores that had, that also sold gas before the state legislation and our code as well, so that you could not license a liquor establishment if they also sold gas. That, that change means that those are not ineligible for getting a liquor license under the state code. And that's what this ordinance does, is allow that to happen. It doesn't, because of the way that the definitional section related to grocery store has been placed, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're without zoning power to still react to appropriate zoning. The more difficult question is when those situations are that they're selling gasoline and because they're selling gasoline, most of these, that, for example, the applications that we've already received, we believe that most of those will be eligible in terms of meeting the 60% requirement for selling 60% other than liquor. So those are items, I think, that we're going to look at. I know my staff is working on it, and I believe the city manager will have the rest of the staff working as well.
Did you just understand? I was just going to add to that, if staff could look at maybe some zoning options that we have, I mean, proximity to schools, residential, different zoning mechanisms we can look at to possibly, I mean, this is a big problem that we just got done addressing and now we're just raising the problem in new places. So I don't know what tools are necessarily at our disposal, but if staff can look at some of the zoning options or different things along those lines to maybe limit the impact of where this new change will apply at.
If, if, I think your discussion is right on point. And if you would put as part of your motion on this to have us come back, we can work with Mr. Lester and the zoning staff and perhaps the police and crafting some approaches that may mitigate against the adverse effects of this particular ordinance change in state law. And if you'd ask us to do that, we'd be delighted to come back with some ideas as to how you might control the bad things that might otherwise happen with this, so.
I'll move item 47 with the direction to the city manager and legal staff that they look at some options that would give us additional ability to control it and minimize some of the issues that we see coming down the road.
Can, can I just ask one other question? And if people have covered this already, I apologize, but the issue of fees for the license is no longer set by us. It used to be in the ordinance. It's set by the...
It's always been set by the state.
But we have it in our ordinance because that's what the...
We don't get any part of a Class E license, so we're going to have all these applicants in the city will get no portion of the fees.
And we probably have this kind of gray area that's going to require more enforcement with no fees to cover it.
Right.
Another unfunded mandate.
Oh man, it's frustrating. Yeah, I would, I would, yeah, I was worried that we might have our fees cut, but we just don't have any at all.
Not on a, not on a Class E liquor license. We don't get any part of that.
So as part of the motion, maybe just to ask city management and the attorney to document the amount of time and energy the city clerk's department for exactly how much it costs us. And Rick, I'd think of you and the police department and zoning. And if there were ways where, you know, because of special enforcement needs, we could create some kind of fee that was local, I think we should. It's, it's just one more case where, you know, some company is going to make a lot of money and the citizens of our city are going to have to pay the bill that enables them to make that money. And it, it just doesn't feel right to me.
All right, we've got a motion. Item 48, council reports from council member Brian Meyer to speak regarding the following items. Do you want to take them all at once, Brian? Should I read them all off or do you want to do them one at a time?
We'll do them individually.
Okay, the first one is A, to initiate paving on County Line Road near Southeast 14th Street.
This one I'd like to refer to the city manager. I'd like to meet with staff about this and before I go any further and find out exactly how to approach it the best way. So my motion on 48A is to refer to the city manager. I'd like to meet with him.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. Item B is to install sidewalks on East Park Avenue from Southeast 14th Street to Southeast 18th Court.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know there's some people here to speak on this. And first off, I'd like to thank Skip for bringing this back to me. This has been going on long since I was on the council, long before I was on the council, that there's a real need for safety purposes. And I don't know why in the stretch between 14th and 18th Court that there was never put sidewalks in there. I know that from a perspective of a city developer standpoint, that sidewalks are required, currently required when you put a development in. I don't know why they weren't in this case, but this is a safety issue and I think there's some people here to speak on this. Is there a reason there's voting in progress still up?
Anybody to speak on 48B on the installation of sidewalks along East Park Avenue?
Hi, excuse me. My name's Carol Jones and I live at 1603 Pioneer Road. I am the Pioneer Park Neighborhood Association President. Pioneer Park Neighborhood Association was formed back in 2007. And one of the first big concerns that people brought to us was the lack of sidewalks on Park Avenue. And it runs right through the middle of our association area, and many of us travel Park Avenue daily and sometimes several times a day. It was never intended, I don't believe, to handle the kind of traffic that it has today. And I think that's specifically because of all the new development out in the Riverwoods area, all of the apartment communities that over the years have been built. It's just a huge amount of traffic that I don't think probably the city planners ever dreamt would happen out there. We have one apartment community that has many disabled residents, and it is not uncommon to see them going down Park Avenue in their motorized vehicles. And if you ever want to have your heart stop, be traveling west on Park Avenue late in the afternoon, come up over a hill, and you have the sun hitting you in the eyes, and you don't see them. You don't see a pedestrian, you don't see a bicycle, you don't see a motorized wheelchair. And many people have come so close to hitting them. It's just a real tragedy just waiting to happen. It is so scary. We're not asking for sidewalks for cosmetic reasons or recreational, as Brian said. It is strictly safety. So we do want to stress that. And I would like to say too, that over the last few years, this city council has done many things for the South Side. We appreciate it. We are seeing things turn around, and we really appreciate your commitment and your dedication. In closing, I would just say that Pioneer Park supports having sidewalks on Park Avenue, and I ask that you would support it also.
Thank you, Carol.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Tim Fitzgerald, 2224 Evergreen. I'm going to pretty much echo everything Carol just said. Last two years, we have just seen a huge turnaround in our neighborhood for the, for the positive. It's nice to come up here and talk about things, what we'll call tweaking. One of those tweaking things is a sidewalk. We have an elementary school in our neighborhood, and we do have a apartment complex that caters to physically handicapped people, or physically challenged, I should say. I apologize. And again, I don't think that Park Avenue was intended to have the amount of residents that it has now. And I know this has been said by me many times, that it is the most, I think it's the densest area in the city as far as residents are concerned in a small area. If those of you that are familiar with Park Avenue, that of course runs east-west, the sidewalks basically, and where Hy-Vee is at Park Avenue, I think it's a, used to be a, oh, help me out here, it was a drugstore that lasted for a very short time on the corner. Yes. And there are no sidewalks there and all the way to where the lao, or Buddha Laos temple is. And again, we have these wonderful things planned for a park that's down on the corner of 22nd Park Avenue. And it's not a question of if somebody gets hurt, but when somebody gets hurt. And I just hate to see something like this happen. And we're just kind of hoping to exploit the city manager to find the talents with his staff to see if there are federal monies available to help us push something like this through. And I did mention the elementary school, right?
Right.
Okay.
It's about safety, Tim.
It's about safety. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Tim, do you see students walking to Weeks Middle School and back along that section of Park Avenue?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Did you bring any pictures, Tim?
No, I apologize. I was going to have pictures, but the person that was taking them, actually the manager of the apartment complex for the physically challenged people is not here. I'm not sure if she understood directions or... It is a fairly, it is, it's a good-sized road. And I know what the problem is, why there are no sidewalks there now. Nobody has $5,000 or $6,000 to throw into their property to do that. I mean, it's just, the economy's bad, and of course, you talked about it at the beginning of your meeting. Hopefully, there's somebody out there, a federal grant or state grants, that will allow this kind of construction for safety. So that's all I have.
Brian, you have a motion on this one?
I do. Is there any other comments or anything?
I know the area pretty well, and I totally agree. I mean, and not to minimize what goes on there, there's other spots around the city as well. And it's always been my frustration that the way our ordinance is set up, it doesn't, we just happen to never created the funds to trump the property owners. If I lived behind Osco, I'd probably think a sidewalk would be really important, but I'm not quite sure I would think it's fair for me to spend $5,000 or $6,000 when I'm one of the least likely people to use it, you know? And so...
Exactly right.
You know, I think about programs like NERP and some of the other things that we've done where we've tried to do a good job. You know, you know, maybe there's a way where there is a pot of money where every year we could say, you know, neighborhood associations can make a pitch that, you know, we're going to be able to do five safety-related, you know, two-block sidewalks each year and have a little fun with it and, you know, get some credit for the work that public works are doing to improve the safety around the community. If there was a way to create that kind of money, I think it would, I think it would energize some of the neighborhood associations, have them take more ownership, and we'd probably get some really good ideas from it. We just need to make a commitment that we're going to reserve some money for it. So I'm not against this at all, and I'm for it on its own. If we could recognize that this is true other places too, and we could energize some of the neighborhood associations by making a pitch for them, I think that would be great in future years to be able to do that.
We have approximately 100 residents that live in the Virginia Park Apartments, and at any given time, they'll be driving down the street in their electric wheelchair, any given time. Well, that's truly our main concern, I think, right now.
Okay.
I think we've got some extenuating circumstances, not only there. We all received a letter around May 5th from Rick about Hubble and Sheridan, and I meant to get back with Rick on that. We need to revisit that one. I was a little bit disappointed that it didn't at least say the resident could use Dart on Call or something like that. But we're going to have a depth at that corner. If you go out there and drive inbound on Hubble and pull on Sheridan, you'll see what I'm talking about. But I totally support Brian on this. Seems like every time I attend a meeting on the South Side, I hear about it. I've actually had residents that are wheelchair-bound, call virtually in tears, and then they call in the middle of winter and tell you that after we plow the snow, it forces them a little bit further out in the street. And I think that with the school involved, the two schools involved in the apartments with physically challenged people, we need to take a real hard look at doing something with this. And I'll support your motion.
Okay. Motion would be to, to have this, I'll kick it back to the city manager, to have the city find the funds to install the sidewalks on Park between Southeast 14th Street and Southeast 18th Court. In fact, this is timely that we just passed item 7D, which deals with sidewalk funding. And it says here that, that no sidewalks have been, no locations for the sidewalks have been completed as far as item 7D. So I'd first look at item 7D for the NERP funds, and then moving forward, Rick, if I can get some response to my request from the city within the month and see, see the Pioneer Park in Riverwoods.
Riverwoods, I'm sorry.
Neighborhoods.
President of Riverwoods. And I want to echo also what Carol said about you guys supporting the neighborhood. There are so many people walking with their heads held high again in that neighborhood because of you guys and, and somebody to lean on. And I couldn't ask for better council members, if I ask you to be there, you show up and...
Are you in sales, by the way?
I owe you dinner, Tim. So to first look at item seven, or to look at item 7D for funding in this source, if it's not available there, to look in other places in the, moving forward in the next couple fiscal years.
We could have a bottle and can dry. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in place. Thank you, Tim.
Seven, yes.
All right. Item 48C, which is, that we should approach I-DOT to rename Highway 65-5 around Des Moines as Interstate 335.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just something that gets brought up a lot on the South Side and from people that dealing with things like South Ridge Mall and the corridor in that area. When you speak, when you talk to folks about Highway 65 and 5 and the south bypass, and nobody really understands what you're talking about. You know, if you talk about I-235, they know exactly where that's at. You know, this does, does not just include Des Moines, but it also includes our friends in the suburbs. And I know Ruth was here earlier from Carlisle. I think she may have left. Christine is now telling me that this is, in fact, on the agenda, and it's been kicked around for a while, I know, but it's on the agenda when we talked to the congressional delegation out in Washington to maybe make that designation. But, you know, it doesn't have to be Interstate 335. Obviously, it can be Interstate 435 or some designation that gives it its own identity, you know, even the Chris Coleman Expressway or something like that. But it has to be something where it gives its own identity so people know what you're talking about when you say Interstate 235 or 435 or whatever it happens to be. So motion would be to refer to the city manager to approach the Iowa Department of Transportation and also our congressional delegation and see what we can do to get that designated.
I think it's a great idea. I think we need one road number continuity all the way because when you're getting over to the university avenue, people getting on and off of there, they still have the same problems as they do on the South Side.
All right, we have motion.
I'll move to refer to the city manager.
Seven, yes.
All right. Completes item 48. Let's go to 49, which is a communication report from Restoration Ingersoll, represented by Ted Irvine, requesting the creation of an urban renewal tax increment financing district for Ingersoll Avenue as an extension of the Metro Center Urban Renewal District.
My apologies. I indicated to him that he was right after the consent agenda, so I didn't think it would be very long.
No, I've been here before. I understand, it's fine. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, Ted Irvine, I'm on the Restoration Ingersoll Board. I own a business at 2801 Ingersoll, and I've been working with city staff and other concerned community members.
other concerned community members on the Restoration Ingersoll project since two thousand and four. The Restoration Ingersoll Group, the board, has existed since nineteen ninety-eight. In our, in all of our good efforts, we've been able to complete four blocks of the Ingersoll restoration. We think it's done a great service to the Ingersoll corridor. We'd like to continue that. Our next phase, as it's planned today, is a four-block phase from Thirty-first Street, which is the western border of our pilot, to Thirty-Fifth Street. If we're able to look at the timeline to complete the entire corridor from Fifteenth Street downtown to Forty-third Street, that's significantly north of fifty years. So we would like to look at it as an opportunity to do something much more quickly. We've benchmarked some other projects in the city and frankly around the Midwest, and it appears to us that this is really an economic development thing for the city of Des Moines. And the vehicle that you mentioned earlier in the evening, TIF, is what we think is required here as the first step for our project. We're really undertaking a brand-new approach in the next phase. We'd like the next phase to be our last phase, so we'd like to do Fifteenth all the way to Forty-third Street. Working with the city on this has been great. I think the city staff, in my time on planning zoning and in my time working on Restoration Ingersoll, I've found them to be very helpful with projects like this. I think you always wish that you would have started these things earlier, you wish you would have asked sooner, but I think there's some urgency to get this TIF in place in two thousand and eleven. I think there's some real process that has to happen first. I think we're gonna need some staff time, so we're gonna need the council to allow that to happen. And if you do that, there's a, there's a real solid core of people that are ready and willing to volunteer for this project. We'd like to develop a master plan with all the constituents in the city that are concerned about this and want this to happen. We've learned a lot. We're already out speaking with neighborhood associations. We have the endorsement of the NOG group to North of Grand Association to take a hard look at this, and they want to be a part of the master planning if we're able to get the TIF. We met with some other neighborhood associations, and we have several more on the calendar. The Westside Chamber of Commerce has voted to endorse the project, as has the Ingersoll Business Committee. So we think we have the support, and we would like to get the support of council to take a look at the research for the TIF, and we're here to help with all of that. Just to give you some other little update that we think is not insignificant is that I've been meeting with the DART folks on their twenty thirty-five plan, and we did the, as some of you know, the trial with the D-line on Ingersoll, which the Ingersoll Business Committee and the Westside Chamber of Commerce paid for to run a trial on Friday nights back last fall. It was very, very successful. Enough, there was enough success to that that their consultants believed that maybe a pilot project in the twenty-third, twenty thirty-five plan for DART, and by the way, that doesn't mean in twenty thirty-five, it's shortly here, if we're able to get our project going, that DART would work on a public transportation plan, which is with us, which we really would welcome. So thank you. We're ready to go, and we would like your continued support for this, and I'll answer any questions.
Any questions?
I would just like to, I'll make the motion to receive and file. There was a letter that was sent from the Ingersoll Restoration Group requesting this, and it was outlining, I think, a lot of the same comments that Ted has just shared with us, but clearly, there's evidence that when we make an investment, such as we did with the Ingersoll streetscape, that it has had a significant positive impact, and we want to look at different options. TIF is one of those options that we want to look at. So my motion is to refer it back to the city manager, to have him designate staff then that would work, and come back with specific recommendations. As you heard the discussion earlier on the property tax bills, we need to get through that legislative session also before we make any final recommendations back to us to move forward, so...
If I could just comment on that, that I think certainly that will have a significant impact on what happens. I would prefer not to wait. If we can, if we can start doing the research, assuming the law as it is, if it changes, we'll have to address it then. I'd prefer not to wait for it.
We'll know in the next week or two.
Maybe.
Mr. Manager, do you have any comment?
Just a couple things. One, this is an important undertaking. The council has used TIF very effectively around the city in different locales, and this fits in with that overall policy and approach to things. I would suggest, because of the, some of the fiscal implications of these sorts of things and the significance to the neighborhood, that you think about taking this up at a workshop and have a preliminary report from the staff in terms of how this could be structured and the implications and the policies. Maybe not at that point every detail resolved, but at least enough that you understand what the fiscal impacts are. And secondly, just a note of caution to everybody, Ted, you and the neighbors and everybody that's working on it. TIF is a wonderful tool, but it's a tool that generates money over a period of time. You don't create the TIF and then have a pot of gold sitting there. It takes, it takes growth and development, and it's from that growth and development that you create an increment that then generates some sort of tax revenue. So you have to think about it as a long-term strategy, and I just, I say it because it's an important principle of TIF and how it works, and just so people don't think that the council gets this approved and suddenly there's a lot of resource there. It'll take time to develop it like anything else. But it is a good starting point, and I'm fairly confident that we can put something in place with council's consent.
Can I just ask then, I agree with the comment on the workshop. I think that's a good way to go forward. What would be the timeline? When could we have that come back then?
You know, I'd really, Mrs. Hens, I'd like to check, we have a lot of workshops coming up and a lot of stuff on our plate right now. I would say it would be within sixty days, but it might be that long before we can get the homework done and come back to you.
Okay.
But I'll work on a specific deadline with Alan and the staff, and we'll come back to you with the...
So can we at least get some guy, ideas to what timeline within that sixty days then?
Yes, I'll send a, as a first step in this, I'll send out a note to you with that kind of schedule.
Very good. Thank you.
Ted, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Seven, yes.
All right, let's now move to item fifty-eight. Item fifty-eight is approving the following list, which is designate the lowest responsible bidder on the Grand View Golf Course Clubhouse as CPMI Construction LLC, Richard H. Jansen, President, two million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, and that includes alternate one that we talked about last week, I believe, at the last meeting about the golf court storage on the lower level. Council Communication Number eleven dash two eighty-seven, A is approved and contracted bond and permission to sublet. Is anyone here to talk about this item? Mr. Manager, any comments on this one?
Mayor and councilmembers, I'll turn it to our engineering staff. Pam Cooksey is here. If you have any particular questions, this recommendation, as you already pointed out and as stated on the agenda, does include the lower-level golf court cart storage improvement as the alternate number one. It's as part of the bid price that's shown on your agenda, two point one nine million dollars, and we recommend that to you.
All right, seeing no comments, is there a motion?
Yeah, seeing there's no comments, I see Mr. Jansen here with us, and I'm very happy to see that they're the low bidder. They're the one just across the parking lot over here, so a local company that we're gonna be able to do business with. And I'm gonna move fifty-eight and fifty-eight A.
Seven, yes.
Good job. Look forward to that, starting. Item fifty-nine, intergovernmental twenty-eight E agreement with Bravo Greater Des Moines, Inc., Council Communication Number eleven dash two ninety-one. We had a great presentation about Bravo this morning. Anyone here to speak to it this evening?
I'll move fifty-nine then.
Seven, yes.
Item sixty is an agreement with PNC Bank, North America, for assignment of its claims and mortgage to the Des Moines building at four oh five Sixth Avenue and five thirteen Locust Street, Council Communication Number eleven dash two eighty-three. Mr. Manager, would you like to quick, give us an update on this?
Mayor and council, this is a Des Moines building. You've taken some prior actions on it. It is utilizing a somewhat unique piece of Iowa law. Our legal staff, Jeff and his staff, have done a great job of moving this through a fairly arduous court process, but with the action tonight, it moves us towards a step of actually getting entitled to it. But our end objective here is not to own the building. Our end objective is to get into the hands of a good developer, so we intend, with your consent and approval tonight, to go through a fairly aggressive process to solicit a developer to come in, and I'm sure that will be an interesting, exciting process, at least I hope it is. We have a wonderful opportunity to take a building which is not generating anything in taxes, is a liability, but is a great building in a lot of ways, and get it back to a useful state that generates some taxes and helps to add to the vitality of town-to-town. So we certainly have high hopes for it, and we look forward to your action this evening.
Have you had any interest?
There has been very interesting, yeah. A lot of interest from a lot of developers, and, you know, sometimes that goes poof, but we hope it sticks with us and gets to the process of sit and proposals.
Mr. Managers, we move forward. Is there any way we can guarantee that the name remain on that building? Is it the Des Moines building?
Well, I hadn't thought of that, Mr. Moore. I think we could probably put that as a suggestion to developers. You might not want to lock it down as a guarantee, but that might be something that we could suggest and encourage to folks.
I think it's a good suggestion. I think that'd be...
Yeah, so do. I think it's great, but we don't want it to stop a sale.
No, we don't want to stop sale, but we have seen things in the past happen where they take one name off and put another one on and...
Are we gonna have an RFP process, or how's this gonna shake out?
Mr. Meyer, there is gonna be an RFP process of sorts. It's gonna be a bit abbreviated. We're not governed by urban renewal on this case, which does have some very strict provisions as to how you go about that, but there is gonna be a process where we solicit bids from developers and give everybody a chance to submit their proposals and ideas to us. But we do have to move it along. There are some historic tax credits that we want to be in a position to take advantage of, and we have to move pretty quick...
I'll move sixty.
...to retain those.
Seven, yes.
All right, could we have a motion to adjourn and reconvene as Board of Health? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. First item is approving the legal department to proceed with a court action seeking authority to abate public nuisance at thirty-four twenty-two Fifty-Seven Streets, Main Structure. Anyone here to speak to that item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move.
Seven, yes.
Item two is a notification from the State Farm Insurance Companies dated April fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, stating their insured Jerry Boots of twenty-four twenty-eight Southwest Ninth Street sustained a fire loss on March thirty-first, two thousand and eleven. State Farm Insurance Companies is holding a fire escrow equal to ten percent of the damages, which are yet to be determined. However, the escrow will be greater than ten thousand dollars. So this is just receiving that notification. Anyone here to speak to that? Seeing none, could we have a motion to receive that notification?
Seven, yes.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for attending. Until next time.